Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of September 12th, 2018. As always, we start every meeting by reminding you that this meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date if needed. I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Do you also please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you all for coming this evening. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of August 29, 2018. Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. I don't see our student advisor here this evening.
She is not coming, she's not feeling well.
She's sick this evening?
She is sick this evening.
So she's gonna double up on her report for the next meeting?
She's resting up so she doesn't miss school tomorrow.
But one of the things, I did meet with Mar Burke and she felt like she'd like more student voice to the committee. So, we are going to meet with a superintendent's committee, superintendent's group of students, two students in the high school per grade, so eight students, that will bring issues or messages to the committee through her so that you have some ideas about what's going on within the high school itself. So we're gonna meet on Thursdays prior to the school committee meeting in case there needs to be something on an agenda that is fruitful for discussion here.
Sorry, Jeff. Burke is a student?
Burke, is a student. She's a senior here. She's the student advisor to the committee.
Superintendent's report, as the superintendent's about to tell you, Mike McHugh couldn't be here this evening, the town administrator, so he has informed Superintendent Simonak and he's gonna report for him, so we're gonna go right to the superintendent's report.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bob. But before I get to that report, your phones and your emails might buzz, I just sent out a Connect Ed message to the entire district about a suspicious activity that happened in Whitman this afternoon, and I'll read it to you. And it was titled "Suspicious Activity." After getting off the bus, two Whitman Middle School students observed a male party in a white van drive by them, stop, reverse, and take a picture of them. They immediately went home and reported this to a parent who notified Whitman PD. Whitman PD is investigating and looking into the incident. It was in communication with Officer Harrington and Chief Benton now. If anything comes of this, we'll announce that to the public through Connect Ed and get information out. But I wanted that for you folks as you're getting those messages right now.
Jeff, having brought that up and seeing as you did, would it not be prudent to maybe contact all of the principals and somehow inform all of the student body that this suspicious activity may be going on? Because I read it on the internet the other day, it's going on in another town.
So we're gonna be proactive with our building administrators and getting more information out. See something, say something.
Okay.
As it goes about, and if you see something, it's okay to report.
Thank you.
This one did go out to everybody, though, students, staff, and the community.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, thank you for that. So, Mike McHugh, Christine and I spoke last week about the proposed cellphone tower at Hanson. Mike is not able to be here due to illness, but he wanted to let me know that the question of the cellphone tower is gonna be presented at town meeting on October 1st, but the school committee will still need to agree even after town meeting as using Hanson Middle School property for the proposed cell tower. And what he said is they have three different competitive bids. The lease agreement will be for at least $600,000 over 20 years with an opportunity for over a million within a 30-year option. All bidders have agreed to provide a STEM opportunity to our district, and he will defer to our district, to us, to discuss with the winning bidder what appropriate actions take place. I don't have a lot of information about that, it was a quick meeting, Mike was supposed to be here to present, but I didn't want folks to be caught off guard because that's gonna be on the town meeting floor, to give the selectmen the opportunity to look at the service provider and then bring it back to the school committee here.
Any questions, anyone? About that proposed cell tower, Chris?
That requires the school committee's approval.
Yes.
Yes.
They're gonna bring it back to us with a full report of what's gonna go on so we can look at it. We have discussed this in previous years and it just never came to fruition. The town of Hanson was tied up with another activity with a cell tower company, and I understand, as I understand it, to chime in a little further on it, that date, there was a drop dead date, and I believe it's run out, and that's why this is coming forward again. Jeff?
Thank you. Next, at Duval, we're having some parking issues with staff parking because of the influx of the new programs over there, so I just wanted to read into the record and to you what I sent to Mr. Linham, the town administrator of Whitman. Dear Mr. Linham, I am writing to inform you of the ongoing parking issues at Duval Elementary and speaking with the new Duval school principal, Dr. Darlene Foley, there are currently only 65 spaces on property. However, most days there are 80 to 95 adults that require a parking spot. At this time and to address the issue and improve the flow of traffic around the building during arrival and dismissal, teachers need to park in the small playground area which is behind the school. Parking in this area prevents teachers from parking on Regal Street and on grassy areas around the building. After significant consideration, we determined a solution to resolve the issue would be repurposing the small playground permanently into a parking lot. The small playground is not used during the school day. The swing set that is located there will be moved into the larger playground where it will surely be used by children during recess. The Whitman-Hanson Regional School District respects the town of Whitman considering repurposing the small playground at the Duval Elementary School into a parking lot for staff and visitor parking and to relocate the swing set into the larger playground area. The Director of Facilities anticipates the estimated cost to install a parking lot as $28,000 and $5,000 to relocate the swing set. We are sending this letter requesting authorization of the expenditure and with the understanding that the town of Whitman will reimburse the district from appropriations at the next town meeting or special town meeting for a capital project. This is gonna be on the docket for the next selectmen's meeting. It was gonna be discussed last night and they didn't have a quorum, I believe, for a selectmen, so we're pushing it for the next one, but I wanted the committee to hear the letter that I sent to Frank.
Questions, Fred?
Have we looked into what work the Whitman DPW could do to defer costs?
Whitman DPW was over there today. So, it's just an estimate there, but Whitman DPW is working with Ernie to see what we can do to minimize any costs to the town.
Ally?
Do we know roughly how many additional parking spots they can get out of that area?
That I don't know.
Will it be enough?
Christine, do you know?
I don't know.
It's gonna be enough, and we wanna make sure that we provide for those visitors, so I'm guessing between 30 and 35?
I can get back to you on that number.
The number that I heard kicked around was 30-ish?
Yes.
Any more questions about Duval parking lot?
Thank you. McQuan?
So, Mr. Farah and I traveled over to McQuan the other day to locate some folders that went missing from the Indian Head School. We were able to locate them in the gymnasium, and upon going into McQuan, it's not ready to be turned over to the town of Hanson. We have a lot of storage in that facility right now. It seemed like that became a dumping ground for anything in the district that needed to be either recycled or declared a surplus. So the cafeteria is full of old broken tables and chairs, there's another room full of old computers that are being repurposed and recycled, so it's not ready to be turned over to the town as of yet. So I'm asking the committee to reconsider what I asked two weeks ago as of September 30th to October 31st, and I believe there was a discussion with the town, a small committee within the town of Hanson about that piece, and I know Chair Hayes was at that meeting.
Okay, the reuse committee was informed and we discussed about what the moving forward parts of McQuan should be. And within the committee, there was several discussions about the reuse, which really doesn't have a lot to do with the school committee, it has to do with the town of Hanson. But we suggested that we get to the part of winterizing the building and getting it boarded up. So, they agreed, we told them we would need some more time to do, to get rid of the disposal and have the yard sale, and they agreed to it, so basically we just have to give them a date, take a vote, and it'll go to the selectmen and I don't see any problems. They understand that it's not an overnight move. Fred?
When you say get it winterized, is the town, are we talking shutting the water off, blowing out the lines, cutting the gas, and having it as a completely dormant vacant building? Or does the town of Hanson want it so they're keeping minimal heat and keeping the building up a little bit?
It has to go to the town of Hanson, Fred.
Right.
But their thought process is quick, get the lines, they've already contracted a company to blow all the lines out and shut the heat off. And boarding up of the windows was going to be done by a company, they've already put out bids, and they're hoping to maybe get like a Cub Scout troop or something to do very similar to what they did at Park Ave. School, paint the windows blue with a gray stripe, so it doesn't look so bad, but they want the building secured because it's like anything, one broken window leads to 20 broken windows. So they wanna secure the building, because the reuse committee and the parts of, the components to move it forward, there's so much for the town of Hanson to do moving that building forward, you're not talking six months, you're talking next year, you know, winter's gonna be here like this.
What I'm asking is the exact responsibilities of the district, is it our responsibility?
Responsibility of the town.
Okay, so the town will take care of blowing out the lines?
Ernie is facilitating it.
Okay. But the town's going to be responsible, so if something's not blown out properly, pipe breaks, it's all on the town, they're gonna be...
Once they accept the building back, it's in their...
What are you looking at for a date?
So right now, I'm looking at October 31st, Halloween.
Okay.
Judging by being in the building right now, Halloween would be a great time to party, that would be awesome.
So an entertaining motion to extend the closing date of McQuan and turning it over to the town to October 31st.
So moved.
Second. Discussions. Mike?
Good question, so we turn it back over, that building is empty, we turn it back over?
Unless, unless there's a decision that we rent storage from the town?
Okay.
You know, and that hasn't been discussed yet?
What are you talking expense-wise to get everything out of there?
It's a good question.
I don't know.
What's gonna be recycled and what's gonna be donated and trashed?
Right.
So, that's what we went through with Ernie and Chad Peters yesterday to identify where that was, and I think in October I'll be able to give you a better idea of what's going and what's salvageable.
There's definitely some things that, like from a recycling of technology standpoint that are gonna be removed with the vendor coming in and taking care of that through the technology department. There's some things that can be repurposed at other buildings, and then there's some things that are trashed, labeled as trash, that will need to be removed that wouldn't even make it probably to the yard sale.
Correct.
Of that nature. So, we just have to make sure of what's gonna be repurposed for different buildings, and then, you know, what's gonna go from there. And then yard sale-wise, does Whitman-Hanson Regional, is that our stuff or is that Hanson's?
I believe that's our material in there.
Okay.
So it would be ours, and the October school committee, I'll give you the dates. We haven't determined the dates yet since we're postponing that.
And just one more thing, Fred, one second. The progression of events is the town goes in, and the town departments, see if it's anything that any of the departments in the town you can use first, and then the next thing is the yard sale. Fred?
Have we looked into the fire panel and some of the other things in the building cameras, et cetera, to see what might be able to be used at other buildings?
Absolutely, and that's, the building principals and the curriculum directors are gonna also go before the town goes and look what we can identify in the district to be repurposed. There's some, there's some stuff in there that's, some of it's new and some of it's, you know, very old.
So, I have a motion, the second, to extend the date to October 31st, is there any fir-, excuse me, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
So, the next item is my entry plan. I've created an entry plan that's in your packet. I presented this entry plan to the faculty on opening day and I've had, I've had conversations with a couple of you, and I'd like to get more input from the committee individually and answer some of the questions that are in this entry plan. I'm not gonna go through the entire plan right here at the committee, you can read it, I'm gonna post it. I wanted you folks to see it before I posted it publicly on our website, but it's to determine, to get information from all the stakeholders within our community on both sides, in both Whitman and Hanson, from the directors, the police chiefs, the folks that are department heads, also the teachers and the parents, and the kids to some extent, of where we wanna go, what's working, what's not working, and what the things that we will need to do as a team to fix as we move forward into 2019, 2020. So I will be briefing you at different committee meetings of what instances, what information I found, and this will help drive our strategic plan for 2019, moving forward. So if you wanna go through that at some point, look at the questions, if you haven't made an appointment with me or a meeting with me and we can have a cup of coffee and just go through some of the questions, I'm logging it all in, so I'd like to gather as much data from you folks and then from the community to put this plan together. And again, coming back to the committee thing, this is what we found, this is what we do really well, these are areas that we need to improve on, this is the cost piece of it, this is what, you know, this is where we wanna be, what type of district do we wanna have? And that's, that's gonna be one of my goals this year, it's not an official goal, it's an unofficial goal, but I'll have this done for you by June.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you, folks. And just briefly about student services, as you know, student services encompasses special education, ELL services and things like that, transportation. We have an ever-growing ELL population in our community, and new residents have moved into both towns that are struggling with the English language. One of our English language teachers left this year, we had a tutor that we have now, who he became certified as an ELL teacher, we promoted him to a teaching position, but we have a vacancy for the tutoring position that we will be posting, or has been posted, to make sure that all of our students in our communities are being serviced appropriately as guided by DUCI guidelines and Mass General laws. The other piece of the student services, we had the opportunity to meet with our CPAC last night, there's some great parents who have some challenging young children, and they were able to meet all the building principals and understand who they are, their roles, and as a contact person, if they have any issues within the district. So, since we have so many new administrators, it was nice for me to meet, we met here last night with those parents, and I just wanted to brief you and say, hey, look, we met with them, they're good folks, I wanted to give them a shout-out, they want, they have some great things planned for this year, including a meet and greet with the police and fire chiefs from both communities. One of the issues they brought up to me last June was, you know, we have some challenging kids at home, and sometimes they're afraid of the big fireman coming in and all the gear, and it's scary, so how can we work as a community to make sure all our citizens feel comfortable with our law enforcement folks? So the chiefs are volunteering their time to come in in November, and I just wanted to update the committee that I met with them, and they now have a common sense with all our administrative team.
Mr. T?
I think that's a step, a good step in the right direction, because during the interview process for superintendent, one of the members on the interview committee brought that question up as part of the superintendent search, and it seemed as though that there was some confusion with some parents, how to navigate special education, particularly students who are new to the system, or parents who just don't quite understand who they should talk to and reach out to. And I think that's, that's important, particularly with the special needs students. So I'm glad to hear that that's in progress.
Appreciate that. They have a, they have a spot on our website, they also have a Facebook page, so if anybody's watching this and have some questions about special education, you can reach out to us in central office, but also a parent-to-parent conversation on the CPAC website would be, would be appropriate. They've asked that.
That's good. Anyone else? Jeff, while you're talking about the website, could you talk about the new newsletter?
Sure. So we are, I have an idea to promote our community through more virtual visual, audiovisual things. So George and I were able to access a couple of GoPros, and we're gonna be going around the districts, and instead of a weekly newsletter, it'll be more of a virtual, hi, this is where we're at, we're around town, and this is what's going on. So you might see us in a car, you might see us at Duval, hey, this is morning meeting, but here's an update. We, the governor's budget came across with some outrageous figures for us, and this is where we're at. So instead of reading it, you're gonna see it more virtual, and see that, and we'll be able to keep that on our, on our website and do that. Also, the principals are also doing some things that are non-traditional, so you're just not getting a weekly newsletter, you're getting some video, you're getting some student information, things like that. So that's one of the things that I'm trying to promote, and I'm gonna be doing a superintendent's corner with local cable, probably quarterly, if not a little bit more than quarterly, bouncing from building to building with local cable access, trying to promote our district and the good things that we do.
Questions, anyone? Chris?
Will you be doing karaoke in the...
Carpool karaoke?
Possibly.
It's possible, you never know. If we can figure out how to use the GoPro, that's been the most challenging piece about putting the battery in, you know?
Sounds great.
Ask the student body, yeah?
Okay, correct.
Everybody good? Anyone else? Any questions for superintendent? Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our athletic director, Bob Rogers, is here, he's gonna give us a couple of brief presentations and let us know where he is.
We're not gonna talk about a scoreboard, that'll get you excited, although you should see it up, hopefully very soon. I am here before the committee tonight. I think this is more informational than it is for a vote, but Bob, you can tell me if this is going to need a vote. So for a while, it's been something that I've really wanted to bring to Whitman-Hanson, and that's an Athletic Hall of Fame. We're one of the very few schools in the area that do not have an Athletic Hall of Fame. What an Athletic Hall of Fame accomplishes is it ties the past to the present, it keeps the alumni more connected to our school after they graduate, because it's not just the students that get inducted into the Hall of Fame, it's their family and their friends that come back and see Whitman-Hanson. It allows our students of today to aspire to something that's pretty special, and most schools have an Athletic Hall of Fame. And that Athletic Hall of Fame will encompass teams, student athletes, maybe specific accomplishments, community members who have contributed to Whitman-Hanson, and it would be celebrated in a dinner in which we would have that induction ceremony. It would start in the first couple of years, we would do it annually, and then eventually it would be an every-other-year endeavor. It's quite a process to pull this together, I've worked with a lot of other schools to get information about how other schools do it, but I don't wanna be a dictator about the process, so I'm gonna allow the committee to help design how it's going to look. We're gonna include a couple of current students in that process, and I didn't want the committee to be looking in the newspaper and seeing that I'll be advertising for people to join this committee when you don't know anything about it. When I spoke to Dr. Whitner about this last May, she did not think it required any kind of vote because it's just something that the athletic department's going to be putting forward, but she did think it would be appropriate, and Jeff felt the same thing, that you, this committee, should be aware of it and be able to give input if you wanted to, and you'd be welcome to come to any of the meetings. The committee would consist at least how it currently stands, with six current Whitman-Hanson varsity coaches, three male, three female sports represented, one high school administrator, two retired coaches, two former Whitman-Hanson student athletes, two community or business members, and two current athletic captains. That structure could change, that's very similar to what communities like Hingham and Silver Lake and other communities that have Athletic Hall of Fames. We will have those members honored in a virtual screen that we're gonna be having in the lobby, and we'll also have some plaques also in the athletic hallway. If you've never had an opportunity to walk down that athletic hallway, it's something that I'm pretty proud of, it really showcases all of the good things that happened in Whitman-Hanson Athletics. That, I didn't make that athletic hallway, our, every year, athletic captains bring that hallway to life with what their vision of what their sport is and what it represents. If you haven't been down there, I really encourage you to go down and take a look because it does showcase all of those things. So that's what the Hall of Fame would do, it would connect the past with the present, it would really help the alumni stay connected to our school, and it would help celebrate all the great things that have happened here at Whitman-Hanson over the last 50-plus years.
To keep it simple, I'll entertain a motion to, to the proposal of establishing an Athletic Hall of Fame.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think it's nice to credit people who do well, whether it's academics, sports, you know, art, music, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a, it's a nice achievement, and I think it does hold the schools together, it sort of creates, I think, a nice centerpiece for the school. So I would strongly endorse that.
Bob, I mean, Mr. Boyce?
And so, we do have, at least in this would parallel with it, the education one in the Performing Arts Center.
Right, so this won't replace that?
No, 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 understanding.
Yes.
Yeah, totally.
Yep.
I mean, I haven't made that wall, but I don't know what else I need to do. Good.
Thank you.
And it also, the other, the other great piece of this, and this is not why I'm doing it, so I'm hesitant to even say it, but for most schools that have Athletic Hall of Fames, they really are great fundraisers for the school as well, because it does connect to the alumni, a lot of times alumni remembers, oh yeah, Whitman-Hanson had a big impact on my life. And sometimes they make donations, sometimes even just the event itself becomes a community event after we've done it for a while, past members wanna go to the induction ceremonies, it becomes a great event that people look forward to.
Fred?
Any consideration for Al Bundy?
Chris?
I was just thinking, first of all, I think it's a great idea, and I think our current programs, I would imagine would benefit from some of the past athletes and sharing their experiences with their particular, you know, sports and the cultures and, you know, that they were able to be a part of and stuff, so I think it's, I think it's a great idea, I'm happy to hear it.
Excellent.
Just have a question, I know you're starting it this year, would there be, I'm just thinking out loud here, would you accept like three or four nominations to get it started?
Yeah, so in the first year, we'll probably have more inductions than we would in a typical year. This first year, we're aiming, and it might be ambitious, we're aiming to try to have our first induction ceremony sometime in March. So, probably even tomorrow, I will issue a press release calling for people that would like to be on the committee, and I really do wanna be open-minded to that committee about what that structure will look like and how it will take shape moving forward. But yes, in the beginning, we'll probably be quite a few more than we would normally have.
Right, because I'm just thinking that if you start in the past, you're talking years, probably 50, 60s?
Yeah, so what most, what most schools do is they, especially in the beginning, is that they would say they're gonna take some, at least one person from each era, so maybe somebody from the 60s, the 70s, the 80s. So you have at least one, and then maybe sometimes there might be, maybe more than that?
Right.
And a team that accomplished, has accomplished something. I mean, it's like one of the things that I say to our football team all the time is that, the current football team the last several years is that you play for one of the most storied teams, not just at Whitman-Hanson, but really in the state of Massachusetts Athletics. When you look at the accomplishments of our football program since Whitman-Hanson's been in existence, it's remarkable. But a lot of times, because we haven't had that same kind of success in recent years, they don't realize that. So it's a matter of connecting the past to the present to, to make sure they understand that.
Good, Ally?
Are you looking to do plaques with their names and hang them up in the school pictures of these people?
Yeah, so that will be more like a virtual, we're gonna be putting something in the lobby that's gonna be an interactive screen that won't be just for the Athletic Hall of Fame, it's gonna serve the entire school, student council, all kinds of activities. I think everybody's gonna really like that, what we have planned for that. So that's where most of the Hall of Fame will be. The recipients will get a nice plaque with their picture and all of that, but because I envisioned eventually we'll have quite a few, I don't really have a place to put that many plaques. So what we'll do is we'll have a nice board where their name will be, like a name plate with their name and their year, and maybe their sport, but it won't be like each member gets their own plaque on the wall or something, because we simply would run out of space.
Bob, would you envision it like, I was at a basketball game and there's a group that is coming now yearly to donate, and they did it at halftime. Would you envision that type of a donation being at that one night that you're talking about?
Well, the, like even what I've mentioned to you guys, to this committee about the scoreboard, that's a way for people to recognize that their teams can be, they can do a shout-out to their team, congratulate, hey, it's the 20th anniversary of our championship, those kinds of things can happen when people remember that they went to Whitman-Hanson and they get back connected.
Yeah.
It's amazing when you connect with past alumni that may have moved away, that they forget how important sometimes their high school days were to them, or they haven't seen a teammate in a long time. I think it'll be pretty special for them.
Anyone else before we vote? All those in favor? Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. The next thing I had for you was, was a list of the donations that we've had, this is primarily within the last year, but it, in all candor, it's probably the last year and a half. Because we rely so heavily on the donations and it's something that I have to do a better job of, a lot of times, we're accepting donations, teams are raising money for uniforms and for different items just to keep our teams afloat because we just don't have that funding. I should be getting those as we get them, but it's hard to look a gift horse in the mouth and say, no, I won't take those uniforms that we need tomorrow. So this is a list of the donations that we've had in the last, it's a little bit more than a year, to the tune of over $70,000. We're so fortunate to have so many people work on behalf of our students. Without them, I don't know where we would be.
An entertaining motion to accept the donations on this blanket form as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Great. And then the last thing I have before I get, oh, I'm sorry.
Discussion? Any discussion on the donations? To all of those people that donated, thank you. We so appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Bob.
And then, Bob, the last thing I have before I get back out to the soccer game is there are two athletic field trips that are coming up. I think it's on your agenda next.
Yeah, I'll do all those together.
You need me here while you do them? Do you have any questions on either one of them?
No.
The only thing I would just say about the cheerleading one is I just don't have, the reason why there's not as much specificity in that one is because they haven't necessarily qualified for those regionals yet, but we should have that information soon. And I wanted to get approved because as soon as we can get good airfares for them, I wanted to lock it in for them.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Bob, please? Thanks, Bob. Michelle, I had acceptance of gifts. Was that the only gift? Because I have a packet full of field trips. I didn't see any other gifts.
There was about 10 field trips.
Yeah, and there's a bunch, so, okay. Surplus materials before we move on to field trips. The MS Simont Act, through the implementation of new K-8 science curriculum reflecting the recently adopted Mass State Science Standards, a large amount of outdated materials and all curriculum supplies need to be declared as surplus. These items vary from outdated science textbooks and complete science kits. False. I respectfully request these items be declared as surplus materials. Sincerely, Max Defance. An entertaining motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next one. The MS Simont Act, through the purchase and implementation of new math resources at middle and high school levels in accordance with the recently revised 2017 mathematics curriculum frameworks, there are some outdated textbook series that are no longer viable for use in our math classrooms. I respectfully request that these textbooks be declared as surplus. Sincerely, Brian Saleed. An entertaining motion to accept a surplus?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. You didn't have a question, did you, Bob? No. Okay, field trips. I have a lot of those. Habitat for Humanity, we do this one every year. It starts on October 18th and goes to the 19th. It's right here at the school, out under the, by the gym. It's the Shanty Town fundraiser. It's approximately 30 students involved. And it's here on, here on our campus. It isn't overnighted. They do stay out all night, right under by the gym, the overhang. They have two chaperones currently with more coming, and it is a fundraiser. An entertaining motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Next one is Model UN. It's from 11-9 to 11-11 and they go to Brown University. It's a weekend college conference. Two chaperones currently. They are asking for a waiver of a school nurse because they have personnel at the weekend college conference. An entertaining motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next one is Experimental Learning and Leadership Internship Program. It's a one-day trip. They'll be going to the University of Rhode Island. The purpose is emerging leaders in workshop and challenge courses. Approximately 28 students. There's one chaperone currently. They are asking for a nurse waiver because at the workshop, they are going to have personnel that can take care of any problems that may arise. An entertaining motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
The cost to the district is $1,000, is that accurate?
The cost to the district is $1,000. Is this the name?
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
They'll use student activities for that. It's renting the courses out at URI and the professor that works with them. So that's, it's been an annual cost for us. We take it out of student activity. So it's really not a direct cost to the district, it's out of our student activities account.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Next one is for the cheerleaders. As Bob discussed, it's a trip from March 14th to March 18th, to be determined. It's in Orlando, it's a national trip. We have two chaperones. They're asking for a nurse waiver because at the event, they have coverage. This is something that they may be going, I can read it to you. I'll be seeking permission for two of our teams to travel out of state. Request of a waiver of the nurse requirements, the activities are covered by the appropriate athletic trainers, as with all Whitman-Hanson travel and school funds are not to be used and it does its own fundraising to make the trip possible. They have to qualify for this, so they're asking upfront just in case. An entertaining motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Boys' basketball is going on their annual trip over Christmas vacation from 12:26 to 1:01. They're going to Florida, they're going to play in the Haynes City Basketball Tournament. Two chaperones currently, they're asking for a nurse waiver because personnel will be on, say, at the Haynes City Basketball Tournament. An entertaining motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
This also needs, the fundraising is done by the basketball team, so they are not using district funds. I had a motion in a second, correct?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Next one is Global Wellness Program. April 12th, 2019 to April 20th, 2019. This is a trip to Ireland and England and supports and enhances our current academic program. Approximately 80 students. There is a cost per student of approximately $3,200. As you can see, there are eight, nine, 10, 11 chaperones. They are bringing a nurse along for the trip. They're going to depart from here at the school with EF tours. They will be coordinating that with the EF tours. An entertaining motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
If they need an extra chaperone, they will go and chaperon that.
I actually went on a very similar trip from here to England and Ireland and it was a fabulous experience. Anyone else? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?